Good evening.
Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, November 10th, 2025. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and on the Star Ledger. Second, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 2nd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Could I ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Andy, could you swear in the professionals?
You gotta do roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was...
Roll call.
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes's excuse tonight. Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Losco's excuse tonight. Mr. Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Scottson.
Here.
Mr. Cabaracus.
Here.
And Chairman Mertens.
I'm here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, Andy, could you swear in the professionals?
Do you swear the testimony will give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Charles Cunliffe.
Jennifer Beem.
Professional sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. Next order of business, approval of minutes?
No minutes to approve.
Correspondents?
I have two things for correspondents. The first is case number BA 25-03. The Hanna Group ABL LLC will be carried to December 8th, 2025, with no further notice. An extension has been granted to the board through December 31st, 2025.
Anybody here for case number BA 25-03 that will be carried until, until December 8th, 2025, with no further notice? Thank you. And second thing?
The second thing, I will have the other board secretary send out an email tomorrow about the Rules Committee, just so people can write it down for December 1st, 2025, for the professionals and the chairman and the vice chairman.
Okay, and our secretary?
December 1st, you said? Yes. I'll have my leave Monday.
It's first Monday in December, so...
Is it my turn?
Yes, yeah, secretary's part of the Rules Committee. I thought you were there last year.
The chair, the vice chair, and the... Yes.
Secretary.
Correct.
Yeah. I'll remind Matt that I think the dates are good for us.
I think it's free dinner, guys.
What's that? Yeah. Same place?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Same batch, yeah.
Exactly. I think you're like out of commission after today, but can you just ask the member to distribute around the resolution that we did for last year and the data on the variances grant, like you usually get like a spreadsheet with variances granted this year?
Sure, for this year, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you had, and that was the second correspondence?
Yes, that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Any resolutions?
No resolutions to approve.
Okay, we'll go to our first case, case number BA 23-24X, Christopher Cabasaskis, extension of time, request for an extension of time on the previous granted bulk variance approval for the construction of a single dwelling on an undersized lot in AREE2 Zone. The resolution of approval was set to expire one year from the date of the resolution, November 4th, 2024. Applicant is now requesting an eight-month extension to May 7th, 2026, on premise known as Block 183, Lot 62, 555 Brick Yard Road. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Yep, so...
Can you state your name for the record?
Christopher Cabasaskis.
Do you swear that the testimony you'll give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we obviously made some changes and concessions in our last meeting, so it required a lot of time for the architect to come up with plans, and then the engineer caught some things that didn't meet the resolution, so it went back to architecture, and then, long story short, it just overran the time, and it was something I was trying to expedite, but I'm at the mercy of everyone else's timeline, so...
Okay.
Charlie? Yeah, so the resolution approval for this application, it was the development of a single-family home on an undersized lot on Brick Yard Road. It was approved by the board on November 4th, 2024. Most of our resolutions have a one-year time period for that approval to be valid on standard, you know, bulk or use variance type applications before they need to come back to the board and seek an extension of that approval. So this current approval would expire November 5th, 2025, so they're still within that time. You're looking for how much longer of an extension, six months, a year?
Eight months, it was.
Eight months? Okay, so there was a lot of back and forth when they did come before to board about changes to the size of the dwelling and things like that. They did submit resolution compliance to my office. We issued a letter in August. There were still some outstanding things. You received that letter, and your...
Correct.
Professionals are working on addressing that? Was there any outside agency approvals that also you're working on that hung you up, or...
So it was coordination between the engineer, the architect, and then also, I believe, my attorney was in contact with your office regarding the meets and bounds for the easement along the roadside. Part of the resolution was the concession of an easement, and I think he was working with your office on that as well.
Okay, so what I would say is, I would be a little bit more concerned if they were seeking a full year. You know, they are making progress, they did resubmit, they're working on the meets and bounds and things like that. I think the fact that they're asking for eight when they could come ask for a year or longer shows that they're in good faith trying to get this closed to move forward towards construction. I have no issue from an engineering perspective with the eight-month extension of time from November 5th of, sorry, November 4th of 2024.
Okay.
2025, sorry.
Jennifer, are you good with that?
I'm good.
Board members, any questions? Okay. Well, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for the extension of time.
Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion that we grant the requested extension of time, eight months.
I'll second the motion.
Second by John.
Roll call.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabaracus.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Approved.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case is case number BA 25-11, George Frey, seeking a bulk variance. The applicant, George Frey, is applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling on an undersized lot in AREE2 Zone. The applicant proposes a two-story, single-family dwelling with associated portable well, septic system, dry well, hatch vault, driveway, and other ancillary improvements on premise known as Block 151, Lot 25, 480 West Farms Road. Exploration is December 9th, 2025.
Thanks, John Hino.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, from the record, John Jackson, on behalf of the applicant, George Frey. I am handing out a PowerPoint presentation consisting of seven pages, which is being distributed now. I'm here with Mr. Rob Siv. He is our engineer and planner, also my client, Mr. George Frey is here. We have an undersized lot, 480 West Farms Road. The lot has unusual geometry. It's 1.5 something acres, whereas two acres are required, so we're slightly undersized. There's a foundation, so apparently there was a house there. Mr. Siv and I took a look at some historic aerial photographs. It looks like there was a house there as recently as, like, 2002, just from aerial imagery. But there's nothing there now but a foundation. So we're seeking, Mr. Frey would like to build a house here for his daughter. He purchased the property, and we think we have an appropriate plan for it. So with that said, if I can have Mr. Frey, Mr. Siv sworn...
Is Mr. Frey gonna testify, Jennifer?
Perhaps.
So why don't we, so we're gonna, can we swear, you're gonna swear?
Yeah, come on, just stand up right there, that's it.
Do you swear the testimony you'll give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your names for the record.
Robert Siv, S-I-V-E.
Yes, I do. George Frey.
Witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, and Mr. Siv has appeared here before. I'm offering him as an expert in engineering and planning, so I don't know if you want me to go through his credentials or if he'll accept them.
It is, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Siv, could you please provide the board with an overview of the application, the zone, the size? I see we have the aerial image up there, maybe you can use that to help.
Sure, the site is identified as Block 151, tax lot 25, is located at the northeasterly intersection quadrant of Lemon Road and West Farms Road, and is in a regularly shaped lot that has an area of approximately 1.5 acres. As indicated, the site was previously developed as a single-family residential dwelling, accessory structures, and ancillary utilities. And I'm just looking at that aerial, I just want to make sure that where the some, or the red mark is not the site.
I'm sorry, it's below it, I didn't fix that.
Yeah, the site is actually on the lower side of 11th Road. So don't go by that tick mark.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
I have it on here.
It's actually in this location right here.
Yeah, under the blue line.
And the existing foundation that was there from the previous house is located in the front area towards West Farms Road. The property is located within the AREE2 Zone, which requires a minimum lot area of two acres, and we are before the board's been knighted. As the zoning officer has determined, the property does not qualify for the existing residential lots record of grandfather clause. We're 1.5 acres, we need two. There is a grandfather provision in the ordinance that would allow it to be developed if it met certain criteria. According to the zoning officer, we don't meet that criteria, so that's why we're here tonight. So the applicant would like to develop the property with a two-story, three-bedroom dwelling. We have prepared a plot plan for the site, which we can put up on the screen, which would show where the proposed house is going. But first, just to get the board oriented, there's a, there are a couple of standards to address for this property. First, I would assert the property has not been merged with the adjacent lot, since to my knowledge, the two lots have been existent since roughly 1961. I believe the house was built in like 1965. And second, the property owner has not created the hardship, and the property has been maintained as a separate, suitable building lot. Therefore, the subject lot is a standalone lot and has not been merged with any other lot. With this in mind, Mr. Jackson has sent certified mailings to adjacent property owners, asking if they are willing to buy and/or sell their property. It's my understanding, he has received one letter indicating that there may be some interest, but at this point in time, I don't believe an agreement has been reached. So with that said, we presume, under the reasonable argument, that the site meets its burden of proof and that it cannot acquire additional lot area, and is in keeping with the neighborhood, which has a number of residentially developed lots on tracts of lands that are in the one-to-two acres size, so this would be in keeping with that area. I don't know if, can we put up the plot plan by any chance? There are, there is one variance that we are proposing that is associated with this proposed development. The ordinance does require a 50-foot rear yard setback. We are proposing a 31-foot yard, a 31-foot rear yard setback. We are orienting the house to face Lemon Road. The applicant believes Lemon Road, and rightfully so, is a less-traveled road than West Farms Road, and there is a stop sign at the intersection of West Farms and Lemon Road where the vehicles approaching West Farms Road on Lemon Road have the stop sign. So we felt facing the house to Lemon Road and having the driveway come out on Lemon Road was the safer condition because the traffic is slowing down and stopping for the stop sign there. So by doing that, the Howell ordinance determines your rear lot on a corner lot, by whatever way your house faces or the front door faces, the other lot is your rear lot. So by facing the lot towards Lemon Road, our rear yard now becomes the angled lot behind the house, which now requires a 50-foot yard setback. We are proposing a 31-foot yard, a 31-foot side rear yard setback for that house, and that is the variance we are going for, for the reasons I just explained. Just as a side note, if we were to have rotated the house to face West Farms Road, then that same property line would become a side yard, and we'd only need 30 feet, and we'd become compliant. So it's really just strictly by the way the house is facing that it becomes a rear yard and determines the setback. There is also a potential second variance that may be needed. We have a 51-foot front yard setback proposed, 50 is the minimum required. We've had a little bit of a hard time determining what the right-of-way width is needed, and if there is any additional right-of-way needed for this road. The tax map has it at 76 feet wide. Because this lot was created in the 60s, there's very little mapping available for it to see where the center line of the right-of-way is. If we were to be required to provide some additional land to the town, we can either do it via easement, which would maintain the 50-foot front yard setback, or we might have to reduce our, might require a variance to reduce that 50 down to maybe like 40 or 40-foot.
Now, with regard to that particular variance, we would have both C1 and C2, right? The geometry of the property, and then C2, we'd advance the purposes by providing that road widening easement, right?
Correct. This is a very unusually shaped lot because the way it necks down in the middle and then it widens up a little bit again at the back, this is very irregularly shaped, and it would be a hybrid C1, C2 type of variance.
Can we just slide down to the larger image above so we can see the whole geometry of the lot for a second? I think, zoom out a little.
Slide, so we can see the top, above the lot.
Above it, yeah.
Up here.
There we go.
You can see how the lot necks down to this point and then starts to open up again, so it's almost like an hourglass or half an hourglass-shaped lot. We're proposing to put the house in the front, I'll call it the southwestern or southerly portion of the property facing Lemon Road, and that's the largest portion of the developable part of the property.
So by comparison, that line across the back is what, about 800, 900 feet long?
That is 855 feet plus or minus.
So the frontage of our property, how many lots across the street is that? One, two, three, four, five, five lots?
Roughly four lots, yeah.
Four, five lot, portion of the 50.
Right, right.
So that would all remain undisturbed, right, for the, most of the lots that also front?
That's correct.
All right, please continue.
So that is the application. I mean, I believe the variances meet the positive criteria in that it promotes the sufficient space and appropriate location for residential dwelling, promotes good civic design, and that the lot is in keeping with the lot sizes that are in this area. As I indicated, there's a number of one-to-two acre lots in this area that are under the two-acre requirement, and it provides the adequate light and air and open space. As it relates to the negative criteria, I believe there's no substantial detriment to the public good, it's compatible with the neighborhood, and it will not substantially impair the intended purpose of the zone plan and/or the master plan.
So let's take a look at some of the review letters. The first one we have is from Environmental, no comments, propose to have septic.
The first is from the Monmouth County Health Department, I believe Mr. Jackson's referring to, and we do have Monmouth County septic approval for this lot. We submitted the plan DC on the screen, they have approved it. We do not have a mounded system, the water table is fairly deep in this location, so we have, we do have their approval for the health, for the septic system.
The next one I just happened to have in my file, Fire Bureau, July 29th letter. Any objections from Fire Bureau?
No objections.
Then after that, I have the TNM letter, we'll go through that in a little more detail.
Mr. Cunliffe, I'm not sure if there's something in particular that I may have missed in your review letter, or what you touched on.
So I just want to jump back to a few notes, right? So we talked about there's the existing lot, the configuration of the lot, the lot area and lot depth, those are existing non-conformities that absent of purchasing land from adjacent properties, that's not something that can be changed with the application, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and then the rear yard setback, there's a 50-foot requirement where 31 feet is required in.
It's proposed.
It's proposed, sorry. And it is a corner lot, so you got two fronts, you got a rear and a side. The side really doesn't come into play here because of how elongated the lot is, it's really just that rear yard because of the triangular nature of how everything comes together. And then the front yard setback, we put it in our letter as really potentially being required. Anytime my application comes before the board, we look at the master plan to see what the recommended right-of-way is, and, you know, if it's deficient, ask them to, you know, provide that right-of-way, so that way things can come into conformance with the master plan. The tax map showed 50 feet, the master plan says 60 feet. I would say if the board is particularly concerned about the setback or anything like that, we could certainly require the applicant to dedicate it as a roadway widening easement. Certainly, it would be cleaner if we do need the right-of-way for it to be just dedicated as a right-of-way. I think they're making a good faith effort to try to cite it on the property and comply with that front yard setback requirement. You know, if we made them shift it back further, it would then just push it further into the rear, exacerbating that relief, so I really don't take an issue with it. We did have a similar application on an undersized lot with a septic system in the front yard on a corner lot, I think it was like Peskin further east than this property. A little bit further down.
Not that far.
A little bit further down the road, but it's in the vicinity, and we were concerned about mounting of the septic system. Mr. Siv, you do have board health approval for the septic system proposed, correct?
That is correct.
And then when you did test pits, can you give us an idea on like the depth to the water table, you know, from grade?
Sure, I believe, and I'll double check, that we did not even hit seasonal high on this property. We did three test pits, and all three of them, no groundwater indicated, observed with a depth of 10 feet, so groundwater in this area is pretty, pretty deep.
So usually when you have a mounted septic system, it's because you have a high water table, you can either provide additional dosing before to kind of reduce the separation, or you have to lift the system up. That doesn't seem to be a concern here specifically since they have the Monmouth County Board of Health approval for the septic design. As far as the lot grading, can you give us some testimony on like the existing drainage patterns, what's proposed? We did have a technical comment about the dry well needing to be increased in size because our calculation differed a little bit from on the plan. Applicant have any issue with addressing that?
Now, we can coordinate that.
All right, and then as far as the existing and proposed grading, can you just give some clarity?
Sure, where the house is cited on the plot plan is roughly where the high point of the site is for this part of the property, and then its sheet flows towards West Farms Road and/or Lemon Road, and will continue to maintain that drainage pattern post-construction.
All right, so the front of the dwelling facing Lemon Road, that generally is pitched towards Lemon Road. The frontage that faces West Farms, that generally breaks and pitches towards West Farms. The rear and the side, it looks like it pitches also towards West Farms, but I see on the, on the plot plan, there is a low area on the property behind you, or at least from this property, there's a 11617. Where does, does that water just go on to the neighbor's property? Can you give us some clarity of what's there?
That continues on towards the neighbor's property, and then over to West Farms Road, our topography just stopped there as it relates to physical topography of the property, but it continues on to West Farms Road.
All right, so it's largely, the rear yard is going to be grassed, right? The roof area is being collected in a recharged dry well for the water quality storm, and it would only overflow and then carry on that way. The driveway itself, that's going to be pitched towards Lemon Road, so any runoff from the driveway will be, will be directed towards the street right-of-way and not in that area?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there is an inlet at the intersection of West Farms Road and Lemon Road that picks up that stormwater runoff.
And then the only other comment, and it comes up on all these ones, is they need a waiver for curb and sidewalk along the frontage. I'll let Jen chime in on that. Looking at the neighboring properties and the characteristic of the neighborhood there, it would certainly require on the sidewalk would, to me, would be out of place, but typically if this board is inclined to grant a waiver, it comes with the applicant making a contribution to the fund for this installation of sidewalk. It just, because of the nature of this property, it being a corner lot and particularly elongated, you know, obviously that contribution would be pretty significant, especially since the frontage on Lemon Road there is, is pretty lengthy. But, you know, I'll let Jen chime in on that, and that's something for the board to ultimately decide on.
Okay, Jen, chime away.
So I'll opine on the issue of sidewalk. I, I'm not, I do not think that sidewalk is appropriate along Lemon Road, there's nothing there, I think a contribution along that. I do think, however, you need to evaluate the potential for sidewalk along West Farms Road. Considering that there's been a significant number of development applications along West Farms, there's like literally zero shoulder, so anyone walking along West Farms is going to be walking in the roadway, so that's something for you to consider. I'm not opining one way or the other, I just, it's something for you guys to talk about. What I would ask, however, Mr. Jackson, is are you submitting the testimony regarding like the dimensional issues associated with the lot as a C1 or a C2?
We are under C1 and C2. I did send out the letter, I believe the gentleman is here tonight, Mr. Yara, I believe, he's here, I spoke to him. We made a proposal to him based on what we believe is the fair market value, he declined at that price under the law of hardship.
I agree, I'm just asking.
So we're seeking it under C1, also, also under C2 on the basis that we're putting an attractive house there, we haven't put that up yet. But also, as you mentioned, the sidewalks and the road widening, we believe we advanced the purpose of the municipal land use law by, this development will allow a road widening, either dedication or easement, as well as 150 feet of sidewalk along West Farms Road where it could be needed, where if we did the buy-sell, that wouldn't happen. So with those two considerations, I think we could also justify the variance under C2.
So the reason I bring this up is that in order for them to opine that the relief associated with like the lot area, the depth, the width, all those things, the dimensional requirements are qualified under hardship, they have to send the buy-sell letters out to try to mitigate that issue. They've done that. There was interest, the interest was in my, you know, from what I understand, and I'm assuming the individual will come up when we open it to the public, but the price was not what they wanted, but that's not what's required. They have to make the offer, and they weren't requiring an exorbitant amount of, of money, it wasn't like they were asking for $50 million for this property, it was a legitimate offer, it was rejected, so they are entitled to utilize the C1 hardship requirement because they did attempt to mitigate it in some way. I take no exception to the application. I don't think sidewalk on Lemon Road is appropriate. If you guys feel sidewalk on West Farms is appropriate, that's fine, however, in this portion of West Farms, I can tell you there's zero sidewalk. So it may be a situation where, you know, you know how I feel, you got to start somewhere, this may not be the place to start. I'm just going to throw that out there, and therefore the contribution may be better utilized by the town to put sidewalk in an area where it's connecting a sidewalk network or in, in an area where we, we do see sidewalks. So you know that I'm usually the one that's pushing, pushing, pushing for sidewalk, I don't know that this site really is the one to fight that fight, but I'm going to leave that to you.
So there's really no new developments close enough where it's...
No, definitely.
If there was a newer development or something's going to be happening soon, I could see your point, at times we should be pushing for the sidewalks. In this situation, I think we all tend to agree that...
Like, this is, this is an infill kind of development.
I'd rather it go someplace that needs it.
I would, I would agree with that, Mr. Chair. I think that we have other sections of town where utilizing money that this applicant will put into our sidewalk fund to facilitate completing some sidewalk networks where we have the infrastructure in place is probably the best alternative.
Okay, any more from you guys?
No.
Right. Board members, any questions? Yeah, go.
What's behind it or on the back of, is that that development that was never developed? It's a farm? On the back of it, where they're requesting relief?
The new development's further down, near Richard.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, questions? Also, with respect to the rear of the property, and that's the rear considering the way the house is oriented as proposed, that looks like a dirt driveway back there. Is that the applicant's property, or is that the adjacent farm that owns that dirt driveway back there? I'm looking at an aerial view.
It's the adjacent property.
Okay, all right. The only other question I had was, the, what's the side setback off of West Farms Road? How far, is that 97 feet? It's a little hard to read.
There wouldn't be a side setback off of West Farms Road, that's a front.
Okay, so what would be that, because it's two fronts?
You're asking for the, you're asking the minimum, or what's the house at?
What is it set at?
The house is set right now at 97 and change feet off of the current property line. If we dedicate the additional footage that's being required, it'd be about 85 feet.
So 85 feet off of West Farms Road?
The right of the property line, yes.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, okay.
Was the letter from Freehold Soil Conservation District satisfied, the one from May 12th, 2025?
We have Freehold Soil certification. I'm not sure what's in that specific letter that you're referring to, but we have their certification.
Well, this one was provide a two and 10-year pre- and post-stormwater analysis of the disturbed acreage only.
So Nick, if they have Freehold Soil certification, they must have satisfied.
They must have satisfied, that part of it, okay.
They're not going to issue a certification if they're outstanding either.
Okay. Thank you.
So is there a farmland buffer requirement? Is that what we're...
Not for a single-family house.
Okay.
Okay, not seeing anything else. I think we will go to public. So I have a motion to go to public.
Motion to go to public.
Second motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
The board will now be open to the public. For questions or comments, please come up and state your name and your home address. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. We'll need to swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your name for the record, spell your last.
I'm C.O. Yera, 466 West Farms.
Can you just spell your last name, sir?
Yera, Y-E-R-A. I heard a lot going on. Be patient with me, it's my first time here, please. I heard there was an offer that was rejected. I never received a letter, I never, well, I'm just making it clear.
Can you stay where you...
Did you talk to the board and...
Yeah, I never got a letter. I actually received a letter 10 days ago. Has the variance been granted yet?
No.
That's why we're here.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to understand.
Are you immediately adjacent?
Yeah. If you could put the property back up, the big farm next to it, where they need the 50-feet setback of rear yard, but they only have 31 feet, that's my property that is going to back up to. I received a letter about 10 days ago saying if I'm interested on the property, which I am, I've been interested since the day I bought my property. The previous owner, the day after I bought my property, March 4, 2020, I tried to purchase the property.
Talk to them, talk to them.
I tried to purchase that property. I couldn't get a deal with the guy, the guy was extremely racist. I was born in Cuba, and I heard a Cuban comment every time I tried to talk to him. The first time I got asked a lot of money for the property. But anyhow, I received this letter saying that I have to treat it as the variance has been granted. I don't know.
So there's a requirement that if the lot is undersized, which the lot is, they're required to sell, to send these letters to their immediate adjacent neighbors saying, "Do you want to buy my property, or can I buy property from you?"
Okay.
That's what that is.
Okay, so I'm interested in the property. I've been interested in the property from the first day that I had that property. I brought my tax records, the property next to it is farm. I've read online about the buffer zone, but I guess it's not for a single-family dwelling. I think there should be some sort of a buffer because that's not fair. That side driveway, that is a working farm.
So you're saying that you think you need a buffer from a single-family home with a driveway?
Well, at least they should have the 50 feet.
They do not require it to the 50 feet, that's not required.
Yes.
No, I'm saying they should have the 50 feet of setback at least. How are you going to put a house 31 feet from my property? I mean, it's going to be nothing but a nightmare in the future. And this is a hardship variance, which I don't see the hardship because I've been trying to buy this property. I have a contract that I signed. The realtor told us, the previous realtor, that if we sign that contract for the full asking price, we will get the property. We send that, we sign the contract, he called my realtor, the landlord, the owner himself, called my realtor and said, this is when they dropped the price to 125. Said, "If that Cuban wants it, he'll have to pay 160."
So have you negotiated with Mr. Jackson?
I've received a letter.
Did you reach out to him?
I sent it, I have the letter here, I have a copy of it.
He's asking if he spoke to the lawyer.
Did you speak to the lawyer who sent the letter?
I signed my letter, and I signed it, I sent it back to him, that I was interested in the property.
Okay, but have you reached out to him to negotiate?
This is how I reached out to him, so I was waiting for him to...
Did you get this, John?
I, yes, I did, and I spoke to his attorney, Mr. Middleton, on two occasions.
To get our record, Mr....
Wait, one at a time, just let him talk.
Mr. Tim Middleton is not my lawyer, he's a personal friend, and I called him to talk to him, and I guess they talked, but he's not a higher lawyer than I hire or anything like that.
But he was talking on your behalf?
Well, I guess, I don't, he didn't even call me, that he made that phone call, so I had no idea.
I highly doubt Tim Middleton would call John Jackson and negotiate a deal on your behalf without your knowledge.
Ma'am, with all due respect, he did not, he was supposed to call me back, he did not call me back, okay? Once I sent it to him, and that's why I'm here. If he was my higher attorney, he would be here.
If he's your BFF, he'd be here too.
He's not my BFF, he's a personal friend of the family, I mean...
Same. I just feel like if someone's negotiating on your behalf, you would make sure that they were here.
Okay, well, I'm here, and I'm interested in the property, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just for the record, to clarify, I did get the letter, and I indicated that, Mr. Siv indicated that right at the beginning, and the letter, as indicated by Mr. Yera, identifies that you can either sell or buy. He checked he would be interested in buying. The letter, as in accordance with the law, outlines it would be of value as if the variance were granted. And I had a conversation about three or four days ago with Mr. Tim Middleton. He indicated that that was his friend, and I conveyed, and he said that he had an offer to, you know, he was interested, I told him $375,000, that's what my client felt was the fair market value. And I haven't heard back, and I also spoke to Mr. Yera in the back of the room today, and he said at that price, he's not interested.
No, I never said that, he just mentioned it to me back there.
Hey, guys, maybe we should, if they need to talk, off the record.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, I don't think it needs to get argued in the negotiation.
Yeah, because we're going back and forth.
But honestly, this is the first, this is the first time that I ever heard of that price. Mr. Jackson has represented...
I understand that, but see, we're going back and forth on this. Let's take five, and you guys go in the back and chat, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Eileen?
And how should you probably do the last, the other application while they're moving?
Yeah, I...
Hey, John, one other thing before we go off. Do you have cop, did you submit the buy-sell letters?
I have right here with the certified.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you. No, I don't know.
So, no, so what we'll do, I think Jennifer's idea is good. I think we should maybe get the other application in, because I don't think that's going to take too long. So if everybody's good, we'll...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So let's move to the next application. And is there any formality that we have to, we've never done this before, where we...
Yeah, right? Is there, is there anyone else from the pub, we should just find out if there's anyone else from the public here on this application.
Okay, yeah, we're still open, so we haven't closed yet.
Yeah.
Is that...
Anybody else from public like to make a comment? Okay, okay, a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So I think with that, Mr. Chairman, will, the board could have...
Just go, jump.
Like adjourn or put the, remainder of the hearing off while the applicants come back. Applicant and the adjoining landowner come back.
So we can't do anything with the other...
No, I think you can.
Yeah, okay, let's do that, and we'll... Okay, the next application is case number BA 2514, Ralph and Geraldine Martinez, seeking a bulk variance. Applicants Ralph and Geraldine Martinez, as applicants and owners, seeking bulk variance approval for a recently constructed patio and pavers that were installed within the required side and rear yard setback on premise known as Block 1.20, Lot 361, Devera Lane. Exploration February 25th, 2025. Good evening, welcome back.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, so what's going on?
So we had a pool and concrete installed around it.
Before we go on, sir, maybe just identify yourselves for the record first, and then I'll swear you in.
Sure.
While you stand up. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, state your names for the record, spell your last.
Ralph Martinez, M-A-R-T-I-N, easy.
Geraldine Martinez, M-A-R-T-I-N, easy.
And your husband and wife?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
Pool installed, concrete was installed as per plans around the pool. Once we got the scope of what everything looked like, it wasn't very much room. So we kind of looked at, we knew we couldn't extend the concrete because it was permanent. At the time, we thought we can extend it with patios, paper patios rather, because they're removable. So we went about three more feet from where we're supposed to as far as the initial variance, for approximately about a 75-foot running.
Okay, so Jen, what are they seeking now?
Yes, so this applicant, they were actually before the board to get relief to build a pool with a concrete patio with certain side and rear yard setbacks that were approved by the board. As part of that application, I think they, the prior homeowner had like a pool at some point, and there was like concrete that almost essentially went to the side and the rear property line with what they were proposing, and they were actually pulling that back, reducing impervious coverage. So it did afford the applicant opportunity to kind of grade around the pool to get water to go towards the right-of-way and not onto neighbor's properties. I think when they were here last time, some of the testimony was that they're kind of like on the low side of the neighboring property, so any runoff that would be generated would essentially like kind of flow across their property and towards the street. So, you know, we can open up to the public, and if any members of the public have any concerns regarding like drainage, that would be where my concern would come from, because that's the reason why the ordinance says 10-foot setback to pools and order to sidewalks around it, to allow there to be room to grade and let things like percolate and not go onto neighbor's properties. I think this is a little bit different case where, you know, they probably could have, if they wanted to the first time around, sought some relief to kind of maybe build right to what was there previously. When they were here last time, you know, it was positive that they were shrinking the patio, but I don't recall there being neighbors who were particularly concerned about what had existed there. So really, they built the pool, the concrete, they just added patio, you know, further beyond what they were allowed to, or got approval for the first time around. But, you know, I would open up the public if there's concern, that's where my concern would come from. If there's not, I really don't have an issue with it.
Charlie, question. Are pavers considered impervious or impervious?
For our purposes, they are considered impervious, but, you know, sometimes if the joint and has sand and stone or anything...
But it depends what they're in. If you, if you stick pavers in concrete...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Then it's impervious. If it's in sand, that's different, but like it depends. If it's a driveway where you're driving over it, it gets compacted, so like, we hear consider it impervious.
Yeah, I mean, we did have rain over the weekend, over the summer, you know, this is, you built this, how long has the patio been here before you submitted your as-built to try to close out the permit? This has been like this for...
Has existed since 21.
Yeah, so, I mean, we did have a particularly harsh summer with a lot of rain, so I would think if a neighbor had a concern about the runoff, we'd hopefully see them here tonight. So if there's no neighbors or public that are concerned, I don't have an issue with it.
Jennifer? Same, I thought. Board members?
The document that was presented to us, the neighbor behind you, am I reading this correct, they run pavers directly up to the fence as well?
Their backyard, yes, they have paver stones also, also to the fence.
Okay, so where does any of the rain runoff go if everybody's paved up?
We, when part of our initial, that we had drains put in also, so there's drains on the side of our home.
So there were drains in the pavers?
Yes.
Okay. Would you know if your neighbor has any?
I don't, I wouldn't know.
Just figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you're on the low end of the... Yeah.
Yeah, we never have an issue. I mean, everything runs out towards the street, it's never been a problem.
Okay, anybody else?
There's a lawn area on the side too, right?
Yeah, the other side of where that patio is, the back end is grass. The whole other side of the house is grass, yeah, if that picture right before, if you go back, you'll see it. That whole side of the house is all grass.
I remember it, yeah.
Looks very nice.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions from the board, we're going to have a motion to go to public.
Motion's open to the public.
Second, second by Mr. O'Donnell, all in favor?
Aye. The board will now open to the public. For any questions or comments, please come up and state your name and address.
Motion's open to the public.
Second by Anne Marie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Then I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion if we grant the variance requested, both variance requested. Second motion to...
Okay, second by Mr. Barillo. Roll call.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Mr. Kaborakis?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
I'm jealous, that's really nice.
Yeah.
Same.
Approved.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Summer party.
They'll be hosting a party later.
Yeah, I'm only around the corner, so...
Whenever you want to come, you let us know.
I'm down the street.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
The board will now take a five-minute break and reconvene at 7:51 PM. The meeting will now reconvene.
Okay, where are we?
We had a conversation, as I indicated, the, well, I don't have to recount the exact sequence and when and how I spoke to Mr. Middleton, but it's a little different. But anyway, the, I had told the gentleman, our price is 375, he thinks that's too high. We're also, you know, my client purchased the property, he has engineering, he has legal, he has the application fee, he has the architectural fees, and we're seeking our variance, not only, I'll address that at the end, but not only C1 and C2. He's had the property for over a year, property is unique, he wants to build this house for his daughter. I'll make the arguments at the end of the case why I think we're entitled under C1 and C2 regardless of the buy-sell. That's one factor that the board could consider the buy-sell. I don't think it has any deleterious impact on the running of a farm. Gentlemen might disagree with me on that, but that's, we'll make our case, but right now, we can't agree on the price.
Okay. Do you have any further, or else would you like to put on the record?
The only thing I could say is, well, I just, Jennifer, I called Mr. Tim, put it on the phone because I never heard from him, so I just wanted it that clear, that I'm not here lying or any of that. The first time that I ever heard about 375 was tonight. I don't know what the property is really worth, I know what I was willing to pay all the time. Do I get like a fair market hearing, like how is that?
That's a legal issue.
No, I mean, even if the board proceeds and does whatever the board's going to do tonight, you could still try to purchase the property, I mean, if you're able to reach an agreement.
But don't I get like an appraiser and like to figure out what the property is really worth? Because I had no time to figure out what the property is worth, or tonight I just get here and I get thrown 375? I have to make my mind up about it right now, like, I mean...
You mentioned that you signed a contract.
Yes.
When was that?
Last year.
Around when last year?
So about November, I want to say they dropped the price from 160 to 125, which in three days of that, I have a signed contract sent it their way, and the gentleman, the realtor, his realtor called my realtor and said, "If you sign full asking price, you'll get the property."
So your contract was for 125?
125, so, but that was... 125. So that was the asking price. That's what we were informed by his realtor. And then he reached out to my realtor and said, well, I said before, tell that Cuban that if he wants it to him, it's 160. So I actually really never had a fair shot buying this property.
Okay, but that's not, nothing to do with?
I just think the board, the board just as a factor, the buy-sell, like it didn't work, like it failed.
I have a copy of the contract here, the date that I signed it and everything. If anybody wants to review it, I mean, I understand what's going on here tonight, but you asked me and that's exactly what happened. And if they would have said to me, you know what, 135 is what he takes, I would pay the 135. I want to clear it. I want to add it to my property. I heard a comment outside, you want to build on it? I'm willing to sign anything. But I would not build on that property. I just want to add it to my property. It's the interest that I have from the beginning.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, do you have any?
This is a separate legal issue for you.
Yes, I believe it is.
It has nothing to do with the case. If he isn't happy with that contract, he should be suing, or somebody should be suing somebody. But it shouldn't be interfering with the case as it is.
Correct.
I agree, Mr. O'Donnell.
So the only issue, Mr. Chair, with respect to the buy-sell, is if the applicant is using the size of the property and claiming that the variance relief for the undersized lot is a hardship. That's the only time we require a buy-sell. If they provided testimony, which Mr. Siv did, to justify the undersized lot under a C2 or the flexible C, the buy-sell issue is irrelevant to this proceeding. They can, now, they can negotiate their issue separately, but Mr. Siv did put C2 criteria on the record to justify the size of the property, which is the only issue associated with the buy-sell. It has nothing to do with them proposing to develop the property. It's just how they choose to justify the fact that the site is undersized. They have provided both C1 and C2 testimony, correct, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, yes.
So therefore, in the event that the buy-sell is unsuccessful, they're going to, and I don't mean to speak for you, rely upon the C2 testimony that has been provided, which does not require the buy-sell issue, correct?
Correct.
So here we have a single-family house with some relief. That's the only thing you guys should focus on.
So to clarify, what you're saying is we're considering the merits of this application for these two variances regardless of any other transaction.
Correct.
They want to build a house on this piece of property. That's it.
All right, so I have a question about the house. And forgive me, I've got laryngitis, so I apologize. I don't normally sound this hoarse. Was there any consideration of building the house wide rather than deep to accommodate that 50-foot setback or try to make it a little less, make it more, give them more setback versus the 30-plus that you're asking for?
Yeah, is the witness finished with his testimony and then we'll?
We, we closed.
No, no, we didn't close.
We didn't close.
You did, I keep.
Okay, 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 okay.
Well, I guess this witness had, this objector or neighbor was pending when you did that. So is there anything else other than the, the buy-sell issue you want to raise about the, the proposed project?
You're asking me?
Yeah.
I, well, I, I don't know how to speak fancy, but all I'm saying is if a house goes there 31 feet away from the farm, there's going to be a lot of complaining with the manure and where all the stuff is. It's something that happens all the time with the farms. That's why with the bigger developments, they get the 50-foot buffers. That's always going to happen. So I just.
So I just want to provide the board some clarity too, right? So we heard the applicant's testimony on the reason why they're siding it to front on Lemon Road from a safety perspective. The same dwelling footprint that they have, if they rotated it 90 degrees facing West Farms Road and shifted it closer to West Farms Road, that rear yard would be treated as a side yard and they probably could do this as a buy right other than the existing nonconformity for the lot area and the lot depth and things.
Because the side yard setback's 30 feet.
Correct. So, I mean, we heard why they're siding the way it is and why they're asking for relief. It's because they feel like Lemon Road is the safer alternative.
Well, I agree. I think that's a.
Agreed, I'm, I'm just.
But understand, they could shift it and then it would be a side yard setback which they would comply with.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that they need to do that. I'm just saying like, this is why, because they want it to be a safer alternative. But I think it's important for this neighboring property owner to be cognizant of that, like, you know, they could do something else with this and they would essentially be working with like things that couldn't be rectified other than buy-sell.
Well, it seems to me too that he's, the owner of the property knows he's building a house with a farm. Well, the farm's already there, so whatever is there, he knows he's building a house next to a farm.
Mr. Yara, are you concerned about the fact that he might complain about the farm? I'm just trying to get understanding, that's all.
Absolutely, they will. They do all the time. We have another farm that was run on 463 Casino Drive, and there was a development that went back there and they're always complaining about something. Either the smell of the manure or the flies or they're always complaining about something.
So whether they're 30 feet or 50 feet, that's going to be a similar issue, to be perfectly fair. So I would just submit, Mr. Jackson, you're representing that your client is looking to build a house for his daughter, correct?
Correct.
And you're going to stipulate on the record that you acknowledge that next door is a farm?
We think that's a huge upside.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that there's an acknowledgement. Mr. Bear, is there any way we can put as a condition of approval that there's some kind of stipulation that they submit like an acknowledgement, like in writing, notarized, that they recognize that there's a farm next door? So if at some point in the future, they come to the governing body to complain about the farm, we have a piece of paper saying?
Well, Jen, I would just put it in the resolution.
Okay, but like, it's, it's a farm. We know it.
Jennifer, I agree with you and it should be in there. And it should also carry forward the same as the variance.
Correct.
Because if the daughter leaves, the next one comes in, then they'll be complaining, maybe.
I think, I think that's why Andy's asked, putting it in the resolution of approval for that.
Okay.
In the event you guys approve the application, that it's in there and it carries with the land like the variance.
So we're trying to mitigate or take care of your concerns about whether it's this applicant or a subsequent owner complaining about your farming activities?
Yeah, that, that gets recorded on the deed, so any future property owner is able to pull up that deed to see that this was something that the owner was aware of when this lot was built. And then I just want to note it for the record and just.
I honestly don't understand, sorry, I just don't understand how it's R2, 2 acres, you need 2 acres. They have 152 and they don't have the setbacks and it's allowed to go through.
So every property in town is entitled to come to the board to be developed. Just because it's undersized doesn't mean they're not entitled to come for a development. What they're asking for is a permitted use in the zone and they're entitled to ask for relief. At the end of the day, I understand you're unhappy with the fact that they're asking for the relief because they're right next door, but it doesn't negate the fact that every person who owns property in town is entitled to be able to utilize the property they own. So I, I get you want to buy it and we're encouraging you to continue negotiations outside the bounds of this body. However, we're regulated by the municipal land use law and they're entitled to come and seek relief. And the bottom line is that they're asking for a single-family house. If they were asking for something other than a single-family house, I don't think we'd be having this conversation because I think the board would be like, no, at the end of the day, it's a single-family house in a single-family zone on a property that's like half an acre low, less than, is allowed in the zone. And as we just said, if they shifted the footprint of this house to face West Farms Road, they wouldn't need a variance from your property line because the side yard is 30 feet, not 50 feet. So they would be compliant. And the only thing that they would have to get relief from is the size of the property, which at this point, there's, you know, not an opportunity to rectify that situation. So that's how the board operates. This board is a zoning board of adjustment. All they deal with is variances. If everybody did everything according to the zoning as it stipulates in the zoning, this body wouldn't even exist. That's, that's why they're here. And they're looking to evaluate whether or not the relief that's being requested is reasonable. And that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Do you understand? I mean, it's, I, I get it, we get it. But, you know, this is technically how it works. And what the planner is saying is absolutely true. They're entitled to come here and after we vote on it, then what goes on from there is not in our hands anymore. So, but if the resolution is going to be more beneficial to you with what our engineer was saying, having a clause in there where no one's going to be coming and complaining, you're going to have more than what you had before you came to this meeting. So I think there's some positive, it's come out for you. So, but after we make a decision, then it's, you know, it's out of our hands as far as the transactions. Okay, anything else? Any more questions?
Can I?
Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, if I can supplement, I have exhibits, 15 copies. Mr. Siv will testify what we're looking at. We'll be between him and it. These two. Now, that's their, a survey from 1965 showing the house there, aerial photographs from 2002 showing the house there then, and then also showing the foundation that's there now from July 2007. Just a whisper around the now. Mr. Siv will testify that the foundation's still there now.
Did you see the foundation?
Well, didn't we finish that?
I just wanted to make that part of the record.
Yeah, we finished testimony, we opened to the public, they were closed to the public with the exception of him. Now it's closed. Like, I don't know why we're introducing new exhibits at this point.
All right, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree. There's, okay. It's a footprint.
It was showing the foundation.
I'm sorry. They closed it earlier with the exception of this individual.
Yeah, we had said earlier if there was anybody else and nobody responded.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, can you do your summary then, please?
Thank you. We're, we're closed, right?
Yep. Yes, John.
Thank you. Just, thank you. So we're seeking the variance under C1 and under C2. Under C1, it's a hardship that you can't acquire property at, you know, fair market value, which we've made the offer to sell it at 375. My client bought this property. He's put in money to get engineering, to have the vision to put a house there, to make the application, et cetera, architectural plans. And he has a beautiful vision there to have his daughter live there. Real estate's unique. It's in a great location. It's next to a farm. We see that as a positive. So we, COC says that the buy-sell availability is only one factor to be considered under hardship. You know, the unique nature of this property, where it's located, we think that that is another basis for hardship. Also, under C2, we advance the purpose of the municipal land use law because we're providing an appropriate house in appropriate location. It's a residential zone. We have a very nice house that's designed just for this location. We've moved it off of West Farms Road and put it on Lemon, which is the better frontage for this type of development. We're providing, paying into the pedestrian safety fund for sidewalks. We're providing road widening, which benefits the community at large. That advances the purpose of municipal land use law. And then on top of that, we're also, also into the fund for the sidewalks that would go on West Farm. So we're helping pedestrian safety. We're rodding the road. We're providing an appropriate house and we're eliminating a broken-down old foundation that's on the property now to put a beautiful house there. So we're hopeful that the board sees that also as advancing the purposes under C2 and grant relief. Thank you for your time and attention.
Anything else from the professionals?
The only comment I have is just want to put on the record for the property owner and future property owners, should the board act favorably. Obviously, it's a corner lot, so you've got two technical frontages. The ordinance does have some allowances for like putting accessory structures in that practical side that's still a front yard. Just obviously before you come in at time of plot plan or anytime in the future, just be aware of that. Like, you don't need a variance relief for an accessory structure in the front yard, but there's still, you got to comply with the front yard setback requirements, things like that. Just noting it now. So, you know, don't want you to get tripped up on a time of a future as-built for a shed or something like that. That's at 45 feet where 50 feet's required, so.
Mr. Fry has heard that. Thank you for the advice.
Okay, nothing else from the board? Okay, I would like to entertain a motion on this application.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application upon everything we agreed upon. And I think it's smart that you put the driveway entrance on Lemon Road off of West Farms Road because I've been going up that road for years. There's accidents all the time. If I couldn't get the entrance on Lemon Road, I don't even, wouldn't even want to build the house if I had to put the entrance on West Farms Road. So we should grant you both variances, the C1 and the C2, and everything else you agreed upon with the sidewalks and, and everything.
Thank you.
Okay, we, motion by Mr. O'Donnell. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Eileen, roll call.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Mr. Kavarakis?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
I agree with Mr. O'Donnell. This is a much safer place to have a driveway, so my vote is yes as well.
Application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, John.
Hey, John.
Is there any further business of the board before we adjourn?
Just wishing Eileen all the best.
Yeah, Eileen. Yeah, Eileen.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
The next meeting is on the 24th.
On the 24th of November, then, okay.
Which, depending on, depending on flights, I may.
Okay, at this time, do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryan, on favor?
Yes.